Okay, next. Does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody in the audience have anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. I will ask for public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. So tonight at the first hearing, I guess there'll be, so there's four regular sitting members, and why don't we go with George this time for the first hearing? And having said that, would someone like to read the first hearing, please?
I'd be glad to do that.
Charlie, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay, new hearings, date is Wednesday, September 27, 2023. Nine Running Light Way. Owners Stanislav and Irina Bertcheshevsky request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an addition, extension, and alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 111, parcel 65, Mashpee, Mass. And I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Okay.
No, Bertcheshevsky is correct.
Hold on, Charlie. One more sheet.
Yes.
Got it?
I got it.
You guys share.
We're gonna share.
You guys share.
Look here. The sharing. That'd be great. I presume David has a plan, building plan? Perfect. Council's down.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Stan and Irina Bertcheshevsky, who are the owners of property at Nine Running Light Way in the New Seabury neighborhood. As noted in the hearing notice, they are proposing an addition which requires approval from this board under a written finding under 174-17 because of the fact that the structure is pre-existing non-conforming. The structure itself is pre-existing non-conforming in two ways. The first is the front yard setback to Running Light Way, where the structure is only 22.9 feet from Running Light Way, which there's a 40-foot requirement in the R3 zoning district. This is located in the R3 zoning district. And also, there is an existing deck outlined here, which is only 12.1 feet from the property line, and thereby violates the rear yard setback of 15 feet, which is required in the R3 zoning district. Also, the shed that's shown on the easterly sideline is only 4.8 feet from the property line, so technically that would be a non-conforming condition for that shed. So what the Bertcheshevskys are seeking is a written finding for an addition on the westerly side of the house, which is approximately 500 square feet. They will be removing the existing deck and replacing with a patio, so that rear yard nonconformity will be eliminated. They also are removing the shed, as per the plan, so the nonconformity to the easterly sideline by that shed will be eliminated as well.
Close about boat rack, you're removing that too?
Yeah, I think everything's being removed there.
Boat rack.
Or, you know, if not, they can move it within the 15, there's certainly plenty of room to move it within the 15-foot setback. The addition itself will conform to the rear yard setback and the side yard setback. It will be 27, I'm sorry.
27.6?
Yeah. It will be 27.6 feet from Running Light Way, which will make it non-conforming, but again, that won't be any closer than what currently exists as a nonconformity at 22.9 feet. The existing lot coverage is 19.9. With the removal of the deck and the shed, overall footprint and lot coverage actually goes down from 19.9 to 19.7%. So given the reduction in the lot coverage, given that we're eliminating two nonconformities, and we're not increasing any existing nonconformity, as I say, we are going to be within the front yard setback, but we're no closer than what currently exists, I would suggest that the board would be well within its discretion to issue a written finding for this project.
So to summarize, no new nonconformity?
Correct.
And I'm very impressed, I'm very happy with your dashed line that shows your setback right here. I'd love to be able to require that in all plans.
Right.
Do the board members see this dash line all the way around?
Yes.
That's the envelope for the house that it must stay within, see this dash line?
Yep.
Anything outside of that is not fitting into setbacks.
I agree.
Very well done, that's impressive.
I like it. I do, too.
I'd like to say that what I'd like to do next is, any letters we read into, and then I'll go to the board.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
I see on the existing back deck, there's a spa. You didn't talk about removing that?
To my knowledge, that isn't being removed. It's just simply the deck and the patio.
Okay, is that even with the ground, above ground? What's the deal?
See if I have a photograph of it.
Yeah, if you look at the, it's not even with the ground, so one of the photos I have of the area proposed addition, you see it looks like the cover of that spa, which is certainly above grade, I don't know if the...
Is it a portable product that can be picked up and moved? Some of them are, right? And I don't know if that, is that considered lot coverage?
I don't think so, but I defer to Dave whether or not they consider the spa lot coverage.
We do.
Okay.
We do, but I would say...
The structure, right?
I would say it's a structure, I'd say it's less than 120 square feet and not habitable, so I would call it, you know, a five-foot setback.
So question, and you said lot coverage, it went from what to what?
From 19.9 to 19.7.
And let's say the spa was not included, but you included it, probably would not exceed the 19.9.
No, no, I don't think so.
Five by five.
So it's your opinion that it's going to remain?
Yes, my understanding is that it's going to remain.
Are you happy with that answer, Jonathan, or do you want more from me?
No, I think it's, I think it's fine, but it's outside the envelope. Does that bear into it, David?
Still 12.1.
Again, I mean, it's a separate structure by itself now that they're taking the deck down. I would say that it's, you know, in the footnote, I believe 19 on 17431, they have provision for structures as sheds that are less than 120 square feet that are allowed to have a five-foot setback.
And that's 12.1.
So that doesn't, that's like if it was a shed, same type of deal?
Yeah, I've been, yeah, I've been, I see it as that, in other habitable structures, it says, yeah, unhabitable structures.
What I'd like to do is...
I don't really have a problem with it, but I do consider it to be part of the lot coverage.
Right. So what I'd like to do is, let's read some letters into the record if they're irony, and then I'll go back to the board, and then David, because that way we can gain them intelligence of the facts or knowledge.
Yep, two comments, one Board of Health, one Conservation.
Yeah, and that way the board may have more comments.
Board of Health comments received 91923, Nine Running Light Way. Board of Health, to remain three-bedroom, Title V inspection required for change in footprint. For the Conservation Department comments received 91923, Nine Running Light Way, no wetlands jurisdiction. I had nothing else in my folder.
Fantastic, so now I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yep.
The board in the past is frowned upon, and I don't, we've dealt with it in different manners, on things going onto other properties. New Seabury Properties, there's a fence from this property going on to that, you see it? I don't know if the board wants to deal with it or just let it go. Top line. See the reserve area A1I2?
Yep.
New Seabury Properties, a fence coming off this property going off into their property. Historically, the board has, well, they've decided in both ways, whether we should make an owner remove or an abutment property or not remove, we've gone both ways.
I see a row of arbivideae.
See to the left of that, at 13.6, right to the left is, that is a fence.
That's a fence?
The circle with the line.
I see it, stockade.
Right, so that fence goes on to New Seabury Property, off of this property.
So I would think that we would want to see some sort of a letter from New Seabury saying, "Not a problem."
Or, "Remove it."
If you want to, if the board were inclined to approve this project and condition it on either the stockade fence being removed from the reserve area, or a letter stating that New Seabury has no problem with it, you know, I don't have any issue with a condition in that.
I would presume that we're not too concerned about the row of arbivideae being natural, they're plant growth, I mean, I'm not so concerned, they're just going to grow, right? But the fence is a different theory. So whomever makes a motion, if it's asked to make a motion, could we include the fact of what was disaided, please?
Yep, I think I can do that, thank you.
Good for you, Charlie.
So again, to summarize, no new nonconformities, no expansion of any nonconformities, right?
Nope. Yes, there's no intensification of the existing ones, so I just want to be clear, this part of the addition is nonconforming, but at 27.6, it's not any closer than what's already there.
Exactly, so you're not creating a new nonconformity?
Right.
Because it's already a...
Exactly, exactly.
Exactly.
And we're not getting any closer than what exists.
And when I reviewed it, it made sense to me because it looked like there was some time and effort made to be able to make that statement.
Yes, yes.
Exactly, so I'm happy with that.
Yep.
So may I go to David? What are your thoughts, David?
Yeah, I'm of the same opinion that they're not creating new nonconformities, and I don't have any problem with the plans.
Okay, having said that, I think we've covered a fence, we've covered a spa.
Yep.
The boat rack will be removed or dealt with because the shed's going to be removed. Any other comments from this board?
So the height is 18.18 and a half feet, or 18 feet, seven inches, one half?
Yeah, I believe that that's...
That's a one-story?
Yeah, it's not, I think the house itself is only, it's kind of like a chalet-type look to it, but I think it's only one story.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it...
Yeah, if you look at the pictures, the kind of, the entryway's kind of like a chalet, but mostly at a...
Probably built in the late...
I would think it was, absolutely.
There's a few of those around.
Yes.
Okay, any other board input?
I don't have any issues.
Audience input? Anybody in the audience have anything to say about this application? Seeing none?
1966, according to the field card.
Wow.
And it says one story per the field card.
So I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing, please, or public comment.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
All is a favor.
Aye.
Okay. So I'd like to get a motion in reference to the application.
To make a motion relative to Nine Running Light Way, owners Stanislav and Irina Bertcheshevsky request a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an addition, extension, and alteration to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 111, parcel 65, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A Section 6. Two, site plan, prepared for Stanislav Bertcheshevsky, Nine Running Light Way, Mashpee, Mass, scale one inch, equals 10 feet, date October 19, 2021, prepared by Warwick and Associates, Inc., signed and stamped by Gary S. LeBrie, number 40039, registered land surveyor, dated 7/22/23. Three, building plans, Nine Running Light Way, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by Birdie Consulting, Constructional Engineering, date 09/18/2023, A100 basement, A101 first floor, A102 second floor, A103 roof plan, A104 south elevation, A105 north elevation, A106 west elevation. Number four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments, and including Title V inspection for change in footprint. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing nonconforming structure to either the town or the neighborhood. Number seven, also conditioned on the removal of the stockade fence infringing upon the adjacent property or receipt of a letter from the adjacent owner of New Seabury Properties permitting the fence to remain.
I presume that would be done prior to the submission of the application for building permit?
Being done prior to the submission...
Thank you, sir.
And request for a building permit.
So I have a question as the chair, and I know that's a motion, Charlie. So Charlie's, and it's probably Jonathan more than anything, Charlie's not sitting on this, on this, right? And yet he's making a motion. Want to make sure that he's doing it correctly, because we're seconding a motion that he's not sitting. Are we okay to do that?
I believe we are. He's just making the motion, he's not voting.
All right, so Charlie just made a motion, would you like to have a second on that?
I'll second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you.
Paper? Paper's coming down.
Coming down.
Don't hit it. Well done, Charlie.
Good job, Charlie.
Going down that way.
I wish it was this easy when you were in front of the guy.
It was easier.
Oh?
It was easier.
In front of the TV.
What I'm going to do in the next one, ladies and gentlemen, is I'll have George still sitting, only because it's going to be a short extension, and then I'll have you, Charlie, at the last one.
Okay.
All right, new hearings, three, the Monomoskoy?
They're not done yet.
Okay.
I get hell for that all the time. So you get it now.
You and me both.
Hold it down, Charlie. You're running just one more word.
It's in the right place.
Oh, yeah.
You, Johnny?
Find your name. Nope, it's it.
I think.
Seven.
Thank you. Okay, Charlie, we're ready.
Okay, are we doing the Monomoskoy?
We are going yes, the next yes, 339 Monomoskoy Road.
Our second item on the agenda for Wednesday, September 27, 2023, is 339 Monomoskoy Road. Owners William P. and Roxanne M. Simmons request a special permit under 17417.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 120, parcel 26, Mashpee, Mass. And there is a letter from Attorney Christopher Corain relative to requesting a continuance until the October 25, 2023 hearings in view of the date scheduled before the Conservation Commission.
Chairman, could you read that letter, it's right there?
No. I have a letter dated September 25, 2023. It's in regards to 339 Monomoskoy Road. Dear Chairman Longview, as you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the Wednesday, September 27, 2023, hearing be continued to October 25, 2023, as the applicants are currently scheduled to be heard before the Conservation Commission on October 19, 2023. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain.
Mary Ann, do we have time on that agenda available? Okay, so that being said, I'd like to get a motion to accept the applicant's attorney's request for an extension, and please, whoever makes a motion, to include the issue of that letter, please.
Okay, motion relative to 339 Monomoskoy Road, to accept the request on the part of the attorney to continue the hearing before us until...
October...
October 25, 2023, as the applicants are currently scheduled to be heard before the Conservation Commission on October 19, 2023, in accordance with a letter to the board from Attorney Corain dated September 25, 2023.
All is a favor.
All right, great, thank you very much, have a great night.
Yeah, so the next one and last, I would like to have the regular four board members and Charlie, please, and 234 Main Street, please read it.
And the last item on the new hearing agenda for September 27, 2023, is relative to 234 Main Street. Owner Nathan J. Conley requests a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a family room and entryway addition, extension to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in R5 and Historic Districts, map 37, parcel 71, Mashpee, Mass.
Charlie? Yep. So I presume you are, either represent the applicant or are the applicant?
I am, yeah.
Could you give your name, address, and your association to the applicant, if you're not the applicant?
I am the applicant, Nathan Conley in 234 Main Street.
Okay, proceed, please, if you would like to present your request.
I'm a little less prepared than the last gentleman.
That's all right, he comes quite often, he's here a lot, but that's all right, we don't quite...
So I'm just building a little breezeway with the family room coming off the side. It's set back a little less than what's existing already, but kind of with the angle of the house and the road, it's still, is not back 40 feet, I think it's 34 or something like that.
Are you all set at this?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so I would really lean on you, David, on this, I guess, I'm not, let me just look at my...
He's extending the nonconformity of the front setback from the street, he's not creating, in my opinion, he's not creating a new nonconformity, and he needs a written finding from the board.
So are there any letters we read in the record, only because the board should have those before?
I do think there is one.
Why don't we read that in the record, if we could, please?
Well, relative to the, let's see, Conservation Commission relative to 234 Main Street, not in wetlands jurisdiction.
Right.
Relative to a letter received from Evan Lera, the Historic District Commission reviewed and approved Mr. Conley's proposed addition at 234 Main Street, and thus the Planning Department recommends approval. That's relative to the Historic District aspect of it. And Board of Health received 91923, no comment, no increase in bedroom flow, to remain two-bedroom. And I think that covers everything.
Thank you, Charlie. Board questions, please?
I have a question, is the concrete patio behind the proposed addition, is it already there?
Yeah, it's behind the house, it's there now.
Okay, so I thought this was an addition, it's not?
It is.
So the brown isn't, so the addition is the other building? Brown has existed.
So if you look at the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did the same thing, I'm like, what is David saying? And I said, wait, he's more intelligent than that, and I looked at him, I said, well, I see why he's saying what he's saying. So the house that exists is 30.4, the addition is 34.7.
Right.
So technically, he is not creating a new nonconformity.
No, he's extending the existing...
Thank you, Ron.
I did the same thing, so that's why I had the answer very quick.
Is that correct, David? He's extending the existing...
He's extending a nonconformity.
Yeah, but he's not creating anything new.
No.
I would like to mention, on the building plans itself, they're on, the building is going to be, the foundation's going to be unsonorited.
Yeah.
So I would require in the permit process that this has an engineer's stamp.
Okay.
So for the conformance of the high wind zone.
Okay.
Because that's not normal procedure, is it? A foundation would be, you know, they have the spacing of, you know, lag bolts on regular foundation, where this doesn't have that.
Yeah.
An engineer has to sign off on that.
Okay.
David, we don't need that in the motion, do we?
No, I don't, but I just wanted to bring it...
You won't issue a permit with that?
I don't think so, I can do that in the permit process, just an engineer has to...
If I could talk about storage containers, so, storage containers slash shed, right? Because they're three feet away, and they look like they're bigger than 120. And that concerns me a little bit, how long have your storage containers been there, in their existing spa?
Pretty much since I moved in, because it's, the house doesn't really have any storage.
Is there a disseminator, separation between, let's say, plan ego?
Yeah, storage containers, I'm not allowed.
Yeah, so that concerns me.
So can you remove those?
Yeah.
Since they're not allowed.
Yeah.
To me, a storage container is somewhat more intrusive than a shed, and we've got anything more than 120 is going to be, you know, I don't know, I'm just looking at saying storage container, it just concerns me.
I don't like them either, to be honest with you.
So we're in agreement, though, this makes it easy.
Yeah.
So you have no problem if we condition it on removal of the storage?
Yeah, I just had to, yeah, to get a storage.
So frankly, if we're wrong, it sounds like you wouldn't have a problem if we conditioned upon you removing them.
I could figure it out.
Great, that would make it easy for us, and you.
Okay.
Does that make sense, David?
What's the timeline on that?
Before we ask for a building permit?
Building permit, yeah.
Can you handle that?
Yeah.
He's going to find a storage...
Yeah, I'll have to get a storage.
I would probably give him till the, until the final, the final signing.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay.
All right. So the force office is okay with final...
Would have until...
Till he gets occupancy...
An occupancy wouldn't be issued without them being...
Yeah.
So whoever makes the motion, prior to the occupancy permit being issued...
So you've got plenty of time.
Okay.
How many, is it two or three?
There's two storage tanks there.
So the two storage sheds shall be removed. What's the third thing out back there? I don't have the plane anymore.
There's a shed there.
Okay.
There's a fence that doesn't grow...
So the two storage containers shall be removed prior to the issuance of an occupancy?
Yep.
And the sheds are, what, 140 square feet? Is that on, what is that sitting on, cinder blocks or what?
No, it's just, yeah, cinder blocks, actually.
Okay, is that an issue, David?
No, you're giving away.
I know. Can I get that site plan back for a second, David?
What is that?
We can borrow mine if you want.
No, that's okay.
I just want to spend another second, I had something that was looking to also be cool.
Wait, that's a big driveway. You don't shovel that by hand, do you?
No, I got a little flower with ATV.
Wow. So David, do you have any other input?
No, I mean, you know, even the storage sheds, if they've been there for 10 years, they're existing longer.
But he's agreed to take them out.
Would they take care of? The sheds, no problem, I have no issues with the new addition.
We don't have any more comments?
Nope.
Anybody in the audience?
Nope.
No more board questions? So I'd like to have a motion to close public comment, please.
So move.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All is a favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we, we're clear on the removal of storage containers, is there anything else we have to have in this? Okay, so could I get a motion in reference to the hearing?
We will propose that. Relative, a motion relative to 234 Main Street. Owner Nathan J. Conley requests a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a family room and entryway extension to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in an R5 and Historic Districts, map 37, parcel 71, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A Section 6. Two, site plan, prepared for Nathan J. Conley, 234 Main Street, Mashpee, Mass, sheet number 1 of 1, date February 6, 2023, drawn by JBB WNH, checked by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, drawing titled Proposed Addition Plan, stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, number 52282. Three, building plans, prepared for Conley residence, 234 Main Street, Mashpee, Mass, date July 1, 2022, prepared by CES Designs LLC, A1, front right and rear elevations, A2, proposed floor plan. Four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department, Board of Health, and Town Planner comments. not limited to the Conservation Department, Board of Health, and Town Planner comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing nonconforming structure to either the town or the neighborhood. Number seven, also conditioned on the removal of the two storage containers shown on the submitted plan prior to the issuance of a final occupancy permit.
So, I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Brad, I apologize if I didn't include you in this one. I missed it, sorry. What happened again?
We only had really-
Good luck, Nathan.
Good luck.
Thank you.
That's true.
We never went down.
It's all garbage.
It is now.
What'd you say?
Unless there approval from the Historical Commission.
Oh.
Which is my question for Mary Ann.
Did you play with the senior league?
Say what?
Played with the senior league?
Game's gone.
Mary Ann, do you provide the script?
No, not for you. No, she doesn't, these are my own, no.
Oh, like, that does your times.
Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Yeah.
Very disappointing.
I'll get it from Jonathan.
What do you, do you have a rental?
No, I just couldn't-
Jonathan didn't have one, I made my own.
Jonathan had a script.
No, he doesn't, I'm telling you.
Sorry?
I'm asking for the script.
I won't give him my script.
I'll give you one.
No, just don't make a donation.
Mine's, mine's the new improved version.
I have his script.
I love it.
I have it in my laptop.
Put it out anyway. Charles?
I need the script.
Yep. It's hard to do without.